Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018 School Committee Meeting here at Tinsborough High School. I call this meeting to order. At this time, we'll start with introductions.
Chair Barry. Good evening. Julie, let's talk to you.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Ternarala.
Paul Mitchell.
Robert Mullin.
Amy Pazarski.
Ryan McMahon.
Joe Messina, Business Manager.
Corey O'Neil, Student Representative.
Sophie Campbell, Soon To Be Student Representative.
Thank you. I ask everyone to please rise. It looks likely for me.
Apologies to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the May 8th, 2018 School Committee and Executive Session Minutes. Executive Session Minutes will not be released at this time.
Make that motion.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0-0. Correspondence?
None tonight, Mr. Chair.
Visitors, comments, and questions? See you then. Share the success. I didn't skip you this week.
Yeah. Alright, so this is my last one. I figured, you know, there's been a lot of big and great improvements in our script this year. Thanks to you guys and hard work, so just like to feature a few of them. So Dr. Flanagan produced and introduced his entrance plan as our new superintendent of schools. Tinsborough High School will now be the beneficiary of a solar energy product, project, which will not only save our student district money and be environmentally friendly, but also will serve as an educational tool. District-wide, we benefited from our first year as a digital learning specialist, having Mr. Varner, and he came into the classrooms and helped integrate technology. A multifunctional school activity bus will start to serve our schools, help increase our participation, seminars, and field trips toward athletic events. Speaking of athletics, we had several amazing accomplishments. Our first year with a unified track and field team for special education students. We also had a new co-op program for hockey. New clubs were founded and school participation was even increased more. Very own robotics team and a TES course was founded. A new student exchange program will be set in place for students from across the world to come to THS to learn. And next year, we'll also be participating in the Bring Your Own Device Program, so kids will have more access to technology. So, yeah, just these and other initiatives. So you guys, this is the administrations and the teachers, very hard work just makes this district a great place to learn, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Absolutely.
I think it's amazing because I say this every year, but each year, it seems the student representative keeps raising the bar. And Corey, you've done a phenomenal job this year, and I want to thank you for all your efforts. Sitting next to Corey tonight, we heard her introduce herself as a soon-to-be student representative, Sophie Campbell. Just a little bit about Sophie. She is the current junior class co-president. She's a part of the student council at Tinsborough High School. She's represented THS at Student Government Day at the Hobie Leadership Conference. She's an NHS member. She takes several advanced placement courses. She's a two-time captain of the cross-country and track team, and she also works at Sullivan Farms, so that's probably the most important stat right there. So that's good to know.
Great.
But Sophie, at this time, we're giving you an opportunity to tell a little bit about why you're interested in this position, how you achieved this position, and I think that would be great.
So we had a presentation about, we got to nominate a couple of our classmates for this position, and I was one of five that was nominated. And we all wrote a one-page essay about kind of why we would want to take on this role. And I wrote about how I really want to be involved in the community in a greater sense because I think that I'm a big part of the school community, and I'd really like to be a bigger part of the town community before I kind of leave and go off to college and see what the towns like really has to offer. And I'm really thankful that I got this opportunity, and I'm excited for it.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So we're truly excited to have Sophie here. And again, I will reiterate, Corey's done a phenomenal job this year. You do a big shoes to fill. Corey, thank you again for being a true representative of the student body. We really appreciate it.
I echo everything Dr. Flanagan just said. It's been a pleasure to have you with us every week, and I enjoy your reports every two weeks. You came prepared. You truly do. You just mentioned things I didn't even know we did. No, you do awesome. So thank you, Corey.
Yes, Corey, thank you, and good luck in the future. I hope that this experience has given you some grounds to take off in, you know, in your future endeavors. Good luck.
Entrepreneurship at Babson College, correct?
Correct, yes.
Excellent. Excellent.
Alright, Subcommittee Update.
The policy Subcommittee met tonight. We reviewed Policy 5.27, which is student-user fees. At this time, there are no recommended changes. This policy will be on the next School Committee agenda to be reaffirmed.
Superintendent.
What's that? You have a couple more?
Uh, nope.
Those are unfinished business.
Okay.
Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee. I am the chair of that. We did meet this evening. We will be sending out Dr. Flanagan's evaluation report.
It's on.
It's already in there?
It's in the drive.
Done the drive?
Under Subcommittee.
Alright. I ask all of you, Dr. Flanagan did a self-evaluation. He also included a blank one. What I would ask each committee member to do is to fill out the evaluation yourselves. Put any comments down that you would like to make in each one of the categories. If you could have those back to me by June 1st, the Subcommittee meeting is going to meet again on June 5th. We will put it all together into one document. We'll send it back out to all of you. And then the Subcommittee will meet again on June 12th with Dr. Flanagan to discuss that. So again, if I could have them back by June 1st, we'll put it all together on June 5th, send it out to the full committee for your review. Any changes, comments, things that you'd like to see, please make them at that time. Send them back to us, and again, we'll meet with Dr. Flanagan on the 12th. Personnel.
Mr. Chair, we have several notifications this evening. We have a new hire, Jen Spanos, who's been subbing in the district, shall now be a 1.0 full-time nurse at Tinsborough Elementary School. Congratulations to Brian Pelletier, Tinsborough Elementary School Custodian, retiring after over 25 years in the district. Brian's done a great job. He's been a staple down there. You've all seen him at some event at the elementary school at some point or another. So we wish Brian the best in his retirement. We also have three notifications of resignation. Bob Callahan from the middle school, Chelsea Corona from the elementary school, and Santa Morenci, Lakeview Valley Collaborative School. And that is it for personnel.
Unfinished business.
Tonight, we have our first read of Policy 10.3, which is physical restraint of students. The proposed draft has been available for your review and drive. As discussed in our last meeting, this policy is being updated based on recommendations that came from the coordinated programming review. This policy will be on the agenda for our next meeting as the second.
Can I get a motion to approve Policy 10.3 as a first read?
Make that motion.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0-0.
And tonight, we also have a second read of Policy 8.1, which is the Athletic Camp Policy. The proposed draft has been available for your review and drive. At this time, we would like to entertain the motion to accept this policy as presented.
Oh, make that motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0-0. Solar panel, or select solar panel discussion.
So, Mr. Chair, as you know, this item's been on the agenda as unfinished business for several months now, as we've been going back and forth between the school attorney and Select Energy. Mr. Messina will provide us with an update right now, and we'll really look for some discussion about the direction the committee wants to go moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. So as Superintendent mentioned, the Select Energy Draft Contract has been bouncing back your council, between your council's office and Select Energy's office and their attorneys. Some of the comments that Attorney Long's council put in there is relative to protecting your interests, but two things are sort of sticking points in council's office in terms of the length of the agreement, which I think we all realize. The commitment to 20-year agreement puts the committee out there, but also the termination appendix. And I think Dr. Branko is actually pulling that out right there. Essentially, what Select is doing is they're putting these solar panels on our building and then using what we pay for energy to pay in installments on those panels. So there is a risk to them if we were to terminate the contract anytime before the end of the year, you know, the end of the 20 years. So this exhibit has sort of got the attention of Attorney Long's office that, in essence, if there was some reason you needed to terminate the contract, and Superintendent and I have had discussions as to what sort of event that might be, it would probably be something sitting here today, we would talk as far-fetched or pretty much not something that's going to happen, something catastrophic on this campus or something like that. On top of all the problems we would have with whatever catastrophic event that would be, there could be up to $1,003,000 in termination fees to pay back to the solar energy company, in essence, buying the panels in year one when they're designed to spread out over 20 years. Most of the other language, with the exception of payment within 30 days, we're trying to stretch that out to 45, given just the process involved with meetings and town hall timelines. We think we'll be able to get some sort of motion where they may want to keep it at 30 days, but we could put in some language that would say we wouldn't be charged a penalty or anything like that if we paid late. To me, that's small potatoes. That's not really the meat of the issue. To me, and the committee's behalf, this exhibit is sort of the meat of the issue, what the termination fees look like if you do terminate before the end of the 20 years, as well as just some of the discussion as to what technology advancements may bring in 20 years. You are locking into buying electricity at what is a good price. 9.8 cents per kilowatt is a very good price. It's actually less than what we're paying for supply right now, but you're married into those technologies for 20 years. So I think at this point, we wanted to get it out to the committee as one last, should we move forward, given what we know in the agreement with the last few issues to hammer out? Or is this something that the committee thinks might be a little bit too, lack of a better word, hard to accept taste-wise and see where the committee wants to go at this point?
I guess if I could start, do we know is this a norm? This type of contract, and this, I mean, this is what everybody's getting?
Yes.
A standard.
So again, Select will be making this large investment and basically paying for it over 20 years. And the only way they can pay their bills will be for us to pay our bills. Again, if they make an investment of $1,003,000, you know, over the 20 years, and all of a sudden, we're not buying energy from them, you know, they don't want to get hit with the million-plus price tag. They want to pass it on to you. So this is standard with the power purchase agreement.
And what was the language lawyer, our lawyer, Long, had said about this?
It's not unusual. They just wanted to call your attention to it, that, you know, it's a termination agreement that if we do sign, we're basically married to the terms, that, you know, if for whatever reason we were to bail out in year one or year two and year three, it's going to be a million-plus in early termination costs.
And I don't think in year one we terminated it. Was there any examples that, you know, did Long look at any examples of, or have we been able to, me and you, look at what other partners of Select have done to terminate early? Like, is this?
Nobody's terminated. To my knowledge, nobody has terminated early from their agreements, and everybody that has entered the agreements, I think the longest I spoke to was about in year four of the agreement. But again, it would, it would just be some sort of, and like I said to Mike when we were discussing it, you know, pick a far-fetched event. What if there was?
No, that should be covered on the insurance.
Close to some event, right?
I would say something that would, maybe on this campus, you would have to close the high school for whatever reason.
No, even a fire.
Not a fire. If we moved the campus.
If the town decided to close the school, for example.
Right. We're going to regionalize, and all of a sudden, we're going to go in a different direction.
All of a sudden, this building is not going to be used. The building is functional, it's not going to be used, but still, the solar panels will be able to produce power. So at that point in time, I would think that there'd be some type of negotiation where maybe the town could buy them energy to, for the...
For the town, as opposed to...
For the town as opposed to the school. So these, I know that these type, this is the way the solar power, solar energy systems work in their agreements. Their 20 years, there's no, that's the only way they can pay for the panels, along with some of the other incentives that state and federal government give. So I think that it's, you know, it's a risk that's obvious, but I don't think it's a, there's a high risk there. I think that as long as we're confident that the, you know, act of God type of thing where an earthquake or a fire or something along that line, which closes the school for some portion of time, is covered, then I'm in favor of going forward with this project.
What's the difference between the early termination and the early purchase? So the early termination is significantly more costly by the time you get to year 20. Why is it so much more?
The, I'm sorry, which number is?
So early termination in year 20 is 170K, whereas the early purchase is 25K.
So the, so basically, you could buy the 20-year-old panels worse than terminating. It would make sense to buy them at that point if you were looking to terminate that close to the end. You could buy the panels, you're buying 20-year-old technology, and, you know, theory being that you could buy them for 25,000, but you would have to partner in another way to get any value from them. So they almost skew it towards the end to make it more worthwhile to purchase rather than terminate.
After year six, it becomes beneficial to purchase versus terminate.
Uh huh.
So if you just purchase them, then what happens?
They're ours.
Right, so we still get energy?
Yep.
But at that point, we don't have to maintain it.
We're on the hook for maintenance.
Yeah.
They're ours to maintain.
And we have to find another partner, right?
Correct.
No.
So, yeah, so...
They would be ours. We just have to maintain the system, which is really the only part of the system that needs to be maintained is the inverter, and every 12 years, so it needs to be repurchased.
So what do you get for the cost of termination? I don't understand why you would have a terminate risk, just buy them out.
It's the first six years that they're trying to cover.
Yeah.
They really get their cost back in six years.
I mean, ideally, they want to partner with us for 20 years. That's the ideal situation. Then they present the, hey, if you're going to leave early, we're going to protect our investment by charging you this large termination fee. Or after six years, if you really want to go out on your own and maintain these on your own upkeep, you can buy them out and we'll stop the agreement at that point.
You said that was the second thing, Joe? Mr. Messina?
Right now, the only real sticking point is that payment term, 30 days versus 45 days. And I was speaking to Leslie in Mike Long's office, and she thinks she might be able to work in some language that would just basically say, if we go beyond the 30 days, they won't charge us any late fees. And the only other thing, both Mike Long and his associate Leslie, Carrie, both say, hey, 20 years is a long time. And it's like, we understand that. We get that. The 20, and that's a lawyer protecting you as their client, that said, just be aware that 20 years is a long time. You know, I would say, knowing what I know right now in terms of technologies and electricity availability out there, 9.8 cents is a pretty good price.
Plus the, we're not paying the distribution charges.
Correct. National grid doesn't have to bring it to this building. That is free of the some...
Seven cent of KW.
Right. At least seven cents charge, all the upcharges to bring the, you know, bring the electricity to the building.
I think that's the only reason we brought it back to this committee. I mean, ideally, we wanted a no-risk agreement. Well, there is a low-risk agreement, but we just want to make sure before we commit to this that the committee did, was aware of the early termination fee as well as the potential sticking point. And again, we do, Long is looking, Attorney Long is looking out for our best interest, so we just wanted to make you aware of these two issues on their part. We're happy to take whatever action in the way the committee is. I just wanted to bring those to your attention.
Joe, what's the expected savings in the first year?
The original savings was in the area of $12,000 in year one. Select came back after our initial agreement to go further in this, and now they're saying more panels and probably closer to $16,000 in year one.
Yep. So it's $16,000, give or take, for the 20 years?
Yeah, I mean, theoretically, electricity costs would continue to rise, and national grid would continue to put on a little upcharge for delivering it to the building. So in the original proposal, I think they had it out in upwards of $300,000 area over the 20 years.
So you need a motion? So I need a motion. Any further discussion on this? Is what we have to do for that?
So I'll make a motion to Dr. Flanagan to sign the agreement?
So...
The chair.
Chair, oh, Chair, Assistant.
Chair, associate.
Yes.
Oh, Chair.
So I think a motion just to continue...
On behalf of the School Committee.
To finalize the contract and bring it before the chair.
Contract and bring it to the School Committee Chair for approval.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
That's it, Sharon?
I got a second from Paul. Mr. Mitchell? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0-0. So Corey, your whole thing there actually worked out really well.
You can see me cringe when you mention it.
I do.
Get a little shook.
All right, new business. Dr. Branko?
All right. Very excited to bring the mathematics curriculum review and adoption overview to you for review and approval tonight. There's a thick packet in your drive that you can peruse at your leisure. I'm going to go through the one-page cheat sheet that's on the front for you, and then I'll just highlight a couple of things that are in the packet. I'm trying to. So just a reminder that we have a, we've implemented, since I came here last year, a five-year curriculum review cycle. We're in year two. Last year, we did a full science curriculum review. This year, we took on a six-to-12 mathematics curriculum review. The reason we did not go after the K-5 math was multiple reasons. Number one, in almost all cases, our teachers who teach math were also teaching science, and they are still in year two of implementation there and negotiating new science curriculum, and we wanted to be respectful of the students and the teachers learning new materials. Also, we wanted to, in the event, which you'll hear tonight, that we adopt a new program, we wanted to make sure that we were comfortable with the new program before expanding it all the way down to kindergarten level. So with that said, in 2017, if you look at the rationale, the new frameworks were updated. So that was one of the driving forces to look at this. And last year, as part of our review cycle, members of the curriculum council and the math leadership team really identified the six-to-12 programming as in need of updating. We were using multiple text sources at the middle school. Students in eighth grade and freshmen were using different algebra texts, and we really wanted to tighten that up and bring some 21st century materials to our students so that they could have blended learning environment, tech books, and very similar activities and learning activities that this new science program has brought to them. So if you look at the timeline, at the beginning of the school year, October and December, I sent out a math program inventory questionnaire to the Merrimack Valley Curriculum Leaders anywhere between 10 and 20 different school districts, who replied back to us to get kind of a best practice overview of what other districts were using. That led us to review those and narrow it down to analyze the current materials that are used in different districts at different grade levels. We looked at our own grade level and course materials. Then in December and January, we looked at several different programs from three publishing companies. They are listed here under that bullet. And then ultimately, after the mathematics faculty reviewed these, we narrowed down to three proposals and three programs. So we looked at the Pearson product and Vision. We looked at the McGraw-Hill products, Glencoe Math, Glencoe High School Math, McGraw-Hill, all the way up to their calculus program and Algebra Trig. And we also looked at the National Geographic Learning Program, Big Ideas for middle school and high school. So we spent time, we invited reps from all three organizations to come in. They met with our math review team. We had hands-on learning activities. We took a deep dive into the hard copy materials and to the web-based materials. We then allowed the curriculum leaders to go out to the six-to-12 faculty and spend time in faculty meetings, team meetings, and early release time to really play with the materials. All of the vendors were great, supplied us with plenty of materials to look at. At the end, it was actually unanimous decision, and similar to the science decision, I did empower both schools to say you don't have to choose the same program. Might have been a little interesting had that not happened, but honestly, but I didn't want to put the parameters around them in the event that high school teachers felt they needed something unique. Fortunately, they did select that we recommend to adopt the McGraw-Hill program, as highlighted in the bullets tonight. So what I'm here to do is present that to you for your approval. I've worked with our rep at length over the past five or six weeks, in and out of Mr. Messina's office quite a bit, much to his dismay, I think, to make sure that we can make this purchase happen. And the proposal is for a three-year purchase plan, so just like science, it will be a six-year adoption program. But if you recall, we did a purchase of two years. We spread the payments out over two years for science. In order to fit this into our budget, and in order to have some reserve in the curriculum line for next year and the year after that, we are negotiating a three-year payment for a six-year program, which is actually pretty nice of the company. They don't always negotiate that, but we've done business with them for science, and I think they're happy to partner again with Tinsborough. Couple of unique things I'm not...
Well, I think, just like I said, Jack, you're also being very humbled. I think, you know, I don't like to give Dr. Branko kudos too much, but he was very aggressive in his negotiation with McGraw-Hill, and he did a tremendous job of really letting them know, this is the best we can do, and we have a strategic five-year plan, and you need to meet our needs. And he advocated on behalf of the district, and did a very good job of getting them to cave.
Thank you. So I'm going to skip through a lot of these, but I just want to quickly highlight, one of the interesting things that makes McGraw-Hill so attractive is they're one of the companies that's partnered with some other educational programming. So very similar to the science program, the students will all have individual web-based accounts, so they'll have technology, they'll have tech book access at home and at school. We will be purchasing, sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students will get hard copy math workbooks, because there's still a lot of research around doing math by hand. And I know that's a big concern for some people, so the kids will still do math by hand, sixth, seventh, eighth, in an old-school workbook that they will, they get issued every year. That's a consumable that just comes back to us through the plan. There will be a blended environment, where they'll be able to use the Chromebooks, other devices, whatever they have at home to access the tech, so they won't have to carry home the giant math text in their backpacks. And then we are also buying, as part of the plan, about 10 to 15 hard copy books per each classroom, just to meet the learning styles of certain kids in the event that we don't want to use technology and they want to go back to the book. So we are going to continue to blend. What we get in return for going in this direction, if you look up here, they also own this product called Alex. This was the most impressive part to our middle school and high school math teachers. So Alex is an online assessment tool. It is adaptive, and unlike NWEA, so you know that we're using NWEA math assessments as a progress monitoring tool to help set benchmarks, to inform our instruction for students, and help differentiate how we meet their needs. What Alex does, it's actually an instructional tool. So you can set up math stations in your classroom. Kids could have individualized projects, homework, and assignments that meet them at their entry point, whether that's low on grade level or above. Totally new to some of the other companies that are out there right now. That was also not part of the original package plan. I did negotiate with our rep to get Alex for all students, sixth to 12th, in our price range. So I'm happy to report that, because I think that's a big win for our kids and for differentiating our educational opportunities for kids. Those accounts will be able to be used at home as well, so that parents will be able to see them, kids will be able to use them for practicing. Another great perk that the high school particularly was happy about is they also happen to own the Geometer Sketchpad, which is a web-based digital tool that allows them able to see them, kids will be able to use them for practicing. Um, another, um, great perk that the high school particularly was happy about is they also happen to own the Geometer Sketchpad, which is a web-based digital tool that allows them to do interactive, hands-on geometric modeling and, and mathematical work, um, right on, uh, the device. And it's, it's device agnostic. All of this stuff is device agnostic, so it doesn't really matter what platform or what tool they're using. Um, so in combination with all of the materials we get, um, that Geometer Sketchpad and the Alex program really gives us an unbelievably robust, uh, differentiated platform for our students. Um, with that said, there's going to be a big learning curve, I think, for the adults more than the kids, quite honestly. So we're talking about, um, three to four, um, PD sessions for the math teachers. Um, we're trying to negotiate one at the end of this school year, another session in the summer, so that they have some, some good full days to prep. Then they'll hit the ground running in September. Um, after a couple of months, we'll kind of take stock in inventory of where we are. We'll then differentiate the PD in the third time around and maybe hit them one more time in the spring. So we're hoping to kind of phase that PD in as we need it throughout the course of the school year. Um, the only other thing I'll skip to at the end, um, traditional AGA, Algebra, Geometry, Algebra program, also all web-based, um, so the high school students won't have to carry the textbooks home. They can use whatever technology they're comfortable with to access all the materials, both middle school and high school. Um, it's also open ed resource capable, which what that means is if I make my own tests, if I make my own supplemental materials as a teacher, I can drop them right into the program for students. I can take the test quizzes, assessments and work pages that the company provided. I can play with them, PDF them, put them back out for students. So if Corey has to only use the odd numbers and I need to make that happen for Corey, I can do that. If I want to push Corey's buttons a little bit mathematically, I can make it harder, move things around and change it just for him. Um, again, a little bit of a learning curve to get that done, but fascinating that it offers that opportunity. Um, and for our upper programs, um, we originally were not looking at going all the way, um, let me just get there for you. We were not looking to get all the way to, um, calculus originally, but unfortunately, when you offer some, when you, when you show people samples, sometimes they get all excited. So the high school teachers checked out the calculus program, um, as well as that college algebra program and, um, much more robust. Um, and at this point in time, the conversations we had is if we're going to spend the money now and we're going to adopt now and we're trying to put a budget cycle and a review cycle together, it didn't make sense to disalign. Um, so we went for it and again, we were able to get that under the price point that we were looking for. Um, so we're taking the soup to nuts, sixth grade all the way up to calculus, uh, starting in September. So very excited. A lot of hard work. A kid couldn't have done any of it without people who actually understand math more than the musician in the room. So Katie Rich, fantastic team leader at the high school, uh, did a lot of work while on maternity leave, believe it or not, checking in on email. Rob Budette filled in in her absence, fantastic resource. Kelly Fitzgerald from the middle school. So that, that was kind of the three-headed monster that really gave me the math input. They worked great with their, uh, teams and came back and really gave me fascinating input. And then Principal Pollitt ogged and, and then Derek Piper was, uh, really invested in to make sure that we had the infrastructure, the technology and make all this happen. So I'd like to thank those people publicly for their hard work and turn it over to you guys for questions and approval, I hope.
So all the, uh, high school teachers are on board?
Yep.
For this?
Yeah. And very, very thankful, very excited.
Is there, um, modules in there? So if a kid comes home and is lost, is there modules in there to, for the parents to sort of review?
Actually, most of the McGraw-Hill products have tutorial seminars built into them. Alex has its own pace for the students, but there's a tutorial and there's actually like a digital tutor in there as well. Um, the younger kids, uh, will still get, um, more of the digital avatar look to it and then the older kids will kind of get the more adult voice.
But a parent could go into it and sort of relearn it and then help out there?
Yep.
Great. I mean, I, I've read a few math books in my.
Sure.
And the capability to still do paper exercises is still there?
All the way through. And as a matter of fact, they, when we do the training, they'll, they'll encourage teachers based on the, the, um, based on the lesson and the unit. They'll, they'll tell you, these are the ones we recommend you print and these are the ones that you can have kids do online. You know, um, but due to the fact that our state assessment is done online, they are mirroring a lot of the two, tools and usability features. So they were, they're really kind of intimately in tune with what's going on in Massachusetts, um, to make sure that the kids have similar program.
Math is a rote learning process, so using your hands to.
Yeah.
Get insulated is something that really helps.
Yep.
At least helped me.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Branko.
I see what work.
Thank you.
And Mr. Messina, we can afford it?
Got to say yes now.
Now we got a solar.
Dr. Branko's hairline and my color keep changing on a daily basis.
That is true.
But yeah, I, I do echo what the superintendent said. I think Dr. Branko would really, really push the vendors to come up with a, not just a product, but a price model that we can accept. And, uh, Mark's worked hard and probably another summer of a lot of cases of books coming into our office. So, um, he'll have a lot of unpacking to do during the summer.
Is there anything we didn't get with this?
No, as a matter of fact, other, other than the pre-algebra and algebra and the trigonometry, we're kind of on the fence. And then once I heard from the teachers, I pushed back and happy to say that we got it all, so.
Thank you, members of Dr. Branko for all your work and, and your staff. So if I could, uh, get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the McGraw-Hill curriculum for the new math curriculum.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zeros there.
Thank you very much, Dr. Branko.
Finance, Mr. Messina?
Thank you, absent of Dr. Branko's future spending. We had thirteen bill warrants presented with the committee tonight. Um, in your drive are the warrant numbers, accounts and amounts. Um, all bills have been returned to me signed. Uh, signing payroll none tonight. We'll do a catch-up at your next meeting. Um, also in your drive is the April twenty eighteen financial packet. That is the list of revolving accounts, the school committee budget at the end of April, as well as a list of the student accounts. And I will leave the May first enrollment to the chair.
All right, enrollment.
Doc, can I have a question about the revolving accounts?
Sure.
Um, a couple of those were significantly in the negative?
Student accounts.
Student accounts, sorry.
Okay. Um, so a lot of the, the negatives surrounding this, the student accounts are timing. Um. You may see, uh, Coke, Coke products where, where have been purchased but not yet sold.
Okay.
Um, sometimes there may be, there's, there's some small accounts that they sort of misalign their spending, that, um, next time a team might hold a fundraiser or a club might hold a fundraiser. We'll catch up on those, um, as well. Field trips, again, field trips is another one that, um, a lot of times we, we cut the check prior to the, the trip itself. Um, so we've, we've paid the bill to the, to the, um, to the event, but we're waiting for the collections from, from the students that are going on that trip.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification.
You're welcome.
All right, enrollment. Um, as of May first, Tingsboro Elementary School, eight hundred and fifteen, Tingsboro Middle School, four hundred and thirteen, high school, four hundred and ninety-seven, out of District Twenty, for a total of one thousand seven hundred and forty-five students. Nobody's got any other? Moving on to school committee's second. Let's start with Ms. Firebags.
Um, I just want to say that these next couple of weeks are very exciting for the seniors. Um, between the, um, the breakfast, the academic award breakfast and the senior academic night that's coming up and of course prom and graduation, um, you know, just, I would just want to tell the seniors to enjoy and, um, you've deserved it and you've worked hard for it. Um, that's it.
I'd just like to say congratulations to all those students and the academic achievement, all the stuff that they've done over the year. So it's great. Um, as a parting gift to, um, Corey, I got him something to pick out on the way out. But it was just in honor of his, um, uh, his academic breakfast that he had and it kind of, kind of made me think about his slogan. And it was one of those, it was one of those things that, you know. So I got you a pen. I got you a drawing prize on the way out.
Going to make Tingsboro great again.
I have no gift for you. Uh, sorry, man. Um, it was a pleasure getting to know you. You represented well. Um, best of luck to you and all of your classmates. Seniors have a great, great last couple of weeks. Enjoy, uh, the celebration, the activities. Please stay safe, um, and, and really enjoy your time.
Sophie? You don't have to say it's awesome. Put you on the spot there.
Hi, Jonathan. Uh, I'd just like to thank each and every one of you. Learned a lot from all you guys about, um, you know, how the school functions a lot more than, you know, just how much work goes into everything that gets, you know, underappreciated a lot of times. It's made me realize, um, you know, I want to get more involved with my town government, school government, uh, in the future, Babson and beyond. Um, the one example I'd like to share, uh, Julia Kay, a sophomore, I believe, at Tingsboro High School, um, she at the last town meeting ran a, put a, uh, citizen petition to help reduce, um, plastic bags. So I think it's like examples like that, you know, Tingsboro just kind of empowered students. So that was great, uh, work by her. That is all. Thank you.
All set to move.
Thank you.
Corey, thank you for all your hard work over the last year. Did a tremendous job. Also, congratulations to the softball team, now eighteen and out.
Um, thanks, Corey, and good luck and welcome to you, Sophie.
Same thing. Um, thank you very much for all your hard work, Corey. Um, hopefully going forward, our meetings will be considerably shorter. You and Dr. Branko competing for who can start a student meeting. I did a great job. I greatly appreciate it. That's all I have.
Corey, good luck at Babson. Enjoy the, uh, four years until you have to get a real job and go off.
Stay in school.
Take the six-year plan.
Sophie, I think it, it's going to be a fun time next year. It's just, there's always something new and different. Like the solar project was something we didn't think of a year ago and now we hopefully have it up and running soon. So it'll be an interesting year. There's always something new to, to go on. Um, to all the other seniors and the rest of the high school and just kids in Tingsboro schools, just be safe. Try and, uh, make this year end the way it started. It's been a great year so far and let's keep it that way. Thank you.
So just welcome, Sophie. Appreciate it. Corey, as always, thank you so much. Uh, congratulations to parents Julie Guastucci and Mike Moran for, uh, your children being celebrated, the Academic Excellence Breakfast, as well as the seventeen others, including, so nineteen total, academic scholars. Those are the students, seniors that graduated three point seven five or higher GPA. We had nineteen this year. It's truly an honor, a testament to their, uh, commitment to their studies. Um, to all our seniors, please be responsible, be careful, be safe and look out for each other over the next couple of weeks. It's, uh, it's an exciting time of year. Be responsible about it. Wish you all the best.
Again, Corey, congratulations. We'll see you on, uh, June first. So we look forward to that. And, uh, I echo all the other comments about being safe. Um, a lot of parties coming up. Just be smart about it. So. Uh, we do have a need for executive session this evening to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body as declared by the chair. We will return from executive session only to adjourn the regular session meeting. This action does require a roll call vote.
Make the motion.
Second. In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
All right, thank you and have a good night.